Call this meeting to order, the Pickle City Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, November 18th. We'll begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Better?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Homan?
Here.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Here.
First on our agenda is a motion to approve the business agenda and the rules of conduct. I don't think I need to read them, but just in case, be mindful of them. We'll accept the motion.
I remove the, that the rules of conduct be included in the business agenda?
Move to approve the business agenda.
I need a second. I'll second it. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have a presentation in the Recreation Division, a 2025 update by Tyler Varla.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. This presentation's going to give you an overview of the year in Recreation so far and provide a brief summary of the programs and events that we offered so far this year. So, we're going to start off with the Lot 9 Concert Series. 2025 was the first full lineup since the construction of the Trevino Performance Pavilion. We had positive feedback from the community on both our lineup and also positive feedback from the bands on our venue and our hospitality. And a big part of that was the suites at Lot 9 across the street as well as the hospitality provided by Crooked Handle Brewing. This year, we had about $129,000 in total sponsorship and grant funding for the concert series, both from sponsors for this year specifically, but also as part of the grant from Dr. Trevino. We had an average of over 1,200 attendees per concert, and we had about 45% of those being Pickle residents and 55% of those coming in from outside of Pickle. Do you have the next slide?
Does it stop working?
Oh, all right.
Is that one?
There we go. Yep. All right. So, this chart here shows you the visits by date for all of our 15 concert series dates for the year. Some things to note, we saw that, you know, 70s and 80s tributes were very popular. You saw that with bands like Crush, Pink Droid, and The Ultimate Doors. Crush was on July 25th there, Pink Droid on August 23rd, and Ultimate Doors, our last show this season, September 13th. You also saw bands that had large followings, travel well into our community. You saw that especially with McGuffey Lane on July 18th. You can see that, that large red bar indicating a huge number of non-residents showing up for that concert. We also saw that on September 5th with Zack Attack. Additionally, we saw huge local support for Reflection on August 22nd. So, just taking this data and using it to kind of figure out what the community likes and always taking public input on what they see in future iterations of our concert series Our 2026 Lot 9 Concert Series will again include 15 performances. We'll go from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Concerts will now include an opening performer on each night. Popular piece of feedback we received this year was people, you know, wanted those concert nights to last a little bit longer, so adding in an opener for about an hour should help us achieve that. It's also a good opportunity to showcase some of the local talent and artists from this area. I'm still on that slide, sorry. So, next year, we'll have predominantly new performers, but we will bring back a few local favorites. Of course, we want to have a range of genres to try and provide something for everybody. And then, the concert series lineup next year will also include a full day of music at Lot 9 for the 2026 Pickle Fest, which is moving downtown for next year. Now, on to community events. First, I'd like to talk about our Movies in the Park. So, we did three family-friendly summer movies this year, June, July, and August, sponsored by Elliott Land and Hardscaping. We had character appearances, there was free face painting, and the Pickle Center came out, provided free popcorn, free snow cones, and cotton candy, so we appreciate their support. We plan to again offer three Movies in the Park next year. Some of the other community events that took place this year include a Community Shredding Day that took place at Pittsburgh Barger in April, Older Americans Month Lunch and Learn in May that took place at the Fort Pickle Plaza, Independence Day fireworks shot up at Hollow Park, we had Shakespeare in the Park at Lot 9 in August, Community Health and Wellness Fair at the Fort Pickle Plaza in September, a Touch a Truck event at our Public Works facility in October, an Ohio State Football Watch Party just recently against Penn State, November 1st, at Lot 9, and we still have our New Year's fireworks display Some of the offerings we had this year in our parks included goat yoga at Fountain Park. We did paddle boarding twice, once dropping in behind Lot 9 and once at Upper Fountain Park where they paddled to Echo Lake and did yoga on the paddle boards. We had a summer walking club that lasted 12 weeks, meeting at six different park locations to allow people to explore different segments of the path. And there was a four-week disc golf instruction course at Moat Park where participants received a free three-disc starter set courtesy of our sponsor, Hazy Shade. We also did some evening yoga at Lot 9 and partnered with the YMCA to offer flag football at Pittsburgh Barger Park, and something cool with that is the kids who signed up to play at Pickle also got to travel over to the Robinson, Branson, Troy and compete against those teams over there. So, that's something we'll look to continue next year. The YMCA also did a four-week fitness series in the summer at Lot 9, and we had additional program partnerships with the Pickle Police, including Police in the Parks and the Self-Defense Course with the YWCA. The YWCA also led some of the walking club series this year as well. So, looking forward to next year, we'll be looking to increase those partnerships and also bring in more instructors to have more recreation opportunities in our parks. So, that's the end of the presentation, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm curious to know how much of your time is spent on Lot 9 programs as opposed to the other part of the program?
The concert series definitely takes a lot of my time and effort in-season, even a lot of, a lot of planning and contract work outside of the concert season, but I would put it at maybe less than half, but close to half.
Okay. And the second thing I didn't see was I didn't see any list of expenses for, for the, for the project. So, when can we have that?
I can get to you anytime you'd like, but just a rough number, we spent about $150,000 this year on the bands and production.
So, that, that would be for the activities at Lot 9?
Specifically for the concerts only, not for the, the other programs.
Okay. Okay. And then, the other question I had was I saw you mentioned that you had $129,000 in, in gifts and, and the grants, was not aware of that, so can you help me know where that come from?
Yeah, so 100 of that comes from the Trevino Grant, which is five years, $100,000 per year, but then the other 29,000 came from our different tiers of sponsors for this year's concert series. And the hope that is with the successful concert series this year that we see sponsorships improve going forward too.
So, so the rest of that was made up from Park's budget?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. We did hit our cross recovery goal for the concert series, but of course, we always like to cover as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
What was some of the feedback from performers this year that is going to influence how you'll handle that in years moving forward?
I mean, really, you mean on like the lineup and who we brought in or?
Just feedback on, you know, how, how well we manage that venue or any, any requests for, for different ways of managing it?
Sure. I received nothing but positive feedback from the acts that we brought in this year. Again, they, it said we treated them like rock stars and, you know, we really worked hard to provide them a great experience with the green room and making sure they were well-stocked and fulfilling their riders and like Crooked Handle providing the meal went a long way with them as well.
How was parking or what was kind of learned about parking and traffic management during those events that might influence how those are managed differently next year?
I think that's definitely something we're still trying to figure out. You know, there is parking to be found downtown, but you might have to walk a couple of blocks. And I think with the McGuffey Lane concert, you know, we, we had a lot of people out at the park, nearly 2,000. That showed us, that's, from that point forward is when we started closing the street for those concerts, just in the, to keep public safety at the forefront, and I think that really enhanced the concert series from that point forward as well, keeping the noise down and things like that and making it feel safer. But it also did help, did not help the parking situation, but I think that's something we can definitely improve going forward.
How, how are the performers selected or how might a local band go about getting that as a venue?
Yeah, so I have a band information form, and I'll send that out to potential acts, usually in August before the next year, just to get their availability and kind of piece things together in terms of a schedule. But recommendations to be on that list come from many different sources, whether it's in person or an email or, you know, we worked with a few talent agencies that might suggest bands they think could be a good fit for us. So, if anybody does have recommendations, definitely feel free to email me. But as far as deciding from there, we do have a Lot 9 Programming Committee that, that works on those.
Any other comments?
Tyler, I know this was kind of a, a wrap-up presentation of this year's programming. My question is more towards next year. Are you planning on keeping these same programs for next year? Are we expanding any of these or anything new coming to look forward to?
Yes. All the programs and, and events that I talked about today will be repeating next year. A couple other ideas we have for next year include a children's concert and then like maybe a free veterans dinner at, at the Plaza, something along those lines. So, again, all ears, if, if there's something that community feels that, that we're lacking and they'd like to see come into our park system, just shoot me an email. We'd happen to explore it.
And then, one last thing, Mayor, and, and this is for the chief. Thank you for allowing the officers to participate in the events at the park. I got a kick, while I wasn't able to attend any of those during the day, I did get a kick out of seeing them posted on social media, and they looked like they were a huge hit. And my question for you is, were there any injuries to report after the activities at the park with the officers?
Any officers?
Good. 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 But all kidding aside, thank you for having the department participate in that, and, and I think that went over very well, and maybe next year, we can get some of the firefighters to join in.
We can try.
All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would propose the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Check it. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You know what? Next is Old Business, Ordinance Number O-16-25, a third reading.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 90, nuisance and Title 15 land usage Pickle Development Code.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the third reading on Ordinance 01625, an ordinance to amend Chapter 90 and Title 15. This is the third reading, and there are no changes from the second or first reading. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Did we not talk about fence height or something? Was that?
I'm sorry?
Fence height, the height of fences, was that included in?
Did we not talk about it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe that was.
So, I mean, as part of the changes, there's a number of.
No, I believe that was.
Is there a specific question about fence heights? I guess the non-conformity section, there was nothing specifically about fence heights in this, but. I, I mean, I can go through kind of the major components if you want me to again.
No.
Okay.
I just thought we had asked for something.
Maybe we're misremembering.
Yes.
Which one, but I believe we had.
I will say, we have brought in a number of, of code changes over the last six months. This one particularly dealt with text amendments, residential accessory structures, what is like a definition of a shed, and then our definition of a nuisance for grass in between the edge of road and the sidewalk, and then some parking changes to the ITE or the, the specific book that is utilized to calculate.
I do believe the fence height issue was on the previous ordinance amending this section.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Kim Heisler?
I know this is the third reading, but for some reason, I just now saw this and had a question to see if, if you guys recognize this also. In 7.2.2, Text or Zoning Map Amendment, 7B, it says the City Commission will act to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or overturn the Planning Commission recommendation. So, what was actually stricken from that was, or return the application back to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. So, with this, it's basically saying, now to save time, you guys can actually make the changes here, right? If, if you don't like what they've presented, you guys can just change it on the fly. I don't know that that's a good idea. I understand for expediency, that's, could, you know, save time. But if you take that out, I mean, why, why have it go through the Planning Commission anyway if you can just go ahead and change it on the fly? I guess is my first question. The second question is, if you guys do change that, is it possible? Because now you're taking out additional conversations, collaboration with other people. To make it expediency, if you do something like that, could you possibly, like, right now, we're having non, you guys have already talked about it, we speak about it, and if, if this goes forward by taking that out where you guys can overrule it, maybe you guys could discuss it and bring us back in one more time just to make sure that whatever is decided upon is actually, hear, hear our voices again to see if it's something that truly should be changed. Does that make sense?
That's what you want?
Are there crickets in here? I mean, I don't, are you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying, I'm, that's why I'm going to ask.
Okay.
Okay. You have anything else on this?
Well, no, I just would like to, I mean, it just seems like yet, once again, the, the chance of the folks or citizens to collaborate and it is just cut right off, and it gives you the power, which you guys are the power, to change, but it'd be nice. Yeah, that's my question, so if you could go ahead and ask, that'd be, be great.
Kyle, was it done to save time?
Mayor, I'm sorry, but we're supposed to allow the Speaker the full five minutes and then respond afterwards so that we're legally compliant.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but sometimes the questions have to be answered, and I'm actually done, but I still have two minutes left, so if you say something, I can respond back to you or you.
All right.
So, that the question actually gets across the way it should be asked to begin with, right? So, there's no interpretation.
I agree. It is unfortunate that we are bound by a settlement that we can't have that back and forth with the community anymore.
You have anything else that you want?
No. So, why did that happen?
I didn't take it off, she's still got her time.
I mean, I still have time, so you can go ahead and answer. I still have time to allot my five minutes, right? You're running it down, so it's not like it's stopping, but now it has stopped. I mean, you know, the track record with the Commission and how this whole process works has just severely gone downhill. The transparency is no longer there, and not given the five minutes, I said it was done twice, time was ticking, and still there was no answers. I mean.
You're still talking.
Do you understand, I, I know I'm still talking. Do you guys understand what I'm saying, though? I mean, can you come to bat for the citizens here and actually help me ask the question the way?
I will ask the question when your five minutes is up.
Well, I don't know when that is, because it's not there anymore.
I know.
So, sometimes when we do ask questions and then the questions go forward.
I hear what you're saying.
They're not right, and they're not how we actually asked them to begin with, and they don't actually get answered. So, allowing us to stay up here while our time is going, while there is conversation, allows that collaboration.
But then the next person will come up and say, I want my whole five minutes and don't interrupt me, ask the questions afterwards.
I understand the time.
All right. So, and we're bound by an agreement.
I heard that. You said that twice, Chris.
I didn't say it. He said it once, I said it once. I didn't say it twice, so let's be factual, but.
Let's be professional.
And I have been.
Let's, let's do our civic duty.
Yep.
And not disrespect us as citizens asking for just a, a simple question.
It's not disrespect. Thank you. All right. So, Kyle, did you, you change, was that change made to save time?
It, it was not. The challenge that you have, I think as I noted in our first reading and as I noted at the Planning Commission meeting, this language modification was due to, one, allowing the elected body to be the final say, and, two, not creating an internal loop for potential projects. So, this really would allow for a process where potentially the Planning Commission and the City Commission could be at odds, and there would be no way to formally approve or deny, for that matter, anything. It would be in an endless loop potentially. If the City Commission continually sent it back down and the Planning Commission continually sent it back up, there would be no additional ability for a formal or final decision. So, this puts the formal final decision in the elected body who is by law elected by the people to make that final decision.
And this process allows citizens to comment when it's brought for the final?
It, it still has numerous opportunities for public comment, as all of our cases do. They go in front of the Planning Commission, and then they come in from the City Commission. If it was to be tabled or if there were additional reasons, there may be multiple meetings, and then, as you're well aware, as this case is, it would have one Planning Commission recommend, or recommendation and a meeting, and then it would have three City Commission meetings for any ordinance that is passed. So, that is four opportunities for public comment on any ordinance that would be brought before you.
Kyle, the way I'm reading this, this doesn't preclude the Commission from sending it back to the Commission, to the Planning Commission if we wanted to.
Correct.
Is, is that the, was, was the intent to disallow that?
No. Again, the language is intended to make it clear that the City Commission is the final body and has the authority to make the final determination on the case.
Otherwise, as you said, it would end up, could potentially end up in an endless loop with no end.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners? I will ask for election.
Any other comments?
No.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Ordinance O.
This 17? No, that's 16. Nope, there are no more.
Okay. I would move that we adopt Ordinance O-16-25.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
It's an ordinance.
Oh, it's an ordinance. I need a roll call.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
All right. Next, we'll go on to Ordinance Number O-17-25, a third reading.
An ordinance authorizing the establishment of the Loft Rental Special Revenue Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This ordinance is, creates the fund to account for the activity of the lofts that we expect to have, which will be rented and also serves the green room for the Lot 9 activities. This is the third reading, and there haven't been any changes, and I'd take any questions.
And all it's doing is creating a fund for the monies to be deposited in?
That's correct, and also for the, to pay out the expenditures related to those lofts and that specific activity.
What, what would be the alternative if, if this fund wasn't created?
We could, we could account for it in the general fund.
But it would just get mixed into the general fund?
Pardon?
It would just get mixed into the general fund?
Yeah, you could pay for it out of there.
And the, the reason for creating this is to keep better track of that, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the, our, our accounting funds are all part of the public domain and, and public records requestable and state audited, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. This is just standard fund accounting, and when you have a source of revenue like this, you can, you know, set up a fund and account for it separately like this and, and track it within a fund, in, in many cases. It all depends on the, what the activity is and how that, how they satisfy the requirements for creating funds.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Nicholas Mart?
When it comes to these lofts and this fund, what specifically is being done to address any risks in the area in regards to public safety, for example, crosswalks? In Troy, they have these blinking cross, crosswalks. I guess you would call them strobe crosswalks, something that you could use at nighttime. Also, I was wondering if there's any mitigation techniques that are going to be used for any cars' exhaust noise and truck pollution in the area being so close to our trucking And? I don't know, I have a lot of time left remaining, so I'll just have a moment of silence for whatever you guys can think of for the remainder of my time. So, I'll take my answers after this, after I leave.
I'll miss the long beard.
So, what is done to address the public safety, crosswalks, et cetera?
Mayor, the, this, this is a housekeeping accounting item and has nothing to do with transportation, but as we heard in the presentation earlier, the roadway is shut down during events, so there's no issues with traffic or pedestrian interface.
Or is there any mitigation techniques for car and truck noise as you ask?
The roadway is shut down.
Okay. I will.
Any other questions?
No. I don't. No, this is all news business. Nope.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt ordinance O dash one seven dash two five.
Second. Moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
On to new business. Ordinance number O dash nineteen dash twenty-five, a first reading.
An ordinance amending chapter ninety-four of the Pickwa code relating to the municipal golf course and the city parks.
Good evening, commissioners. We have two items before you tonight that relate to the Echo Hills Golf Course. And we typically have our golf manager come and give a presentation, letting you know how the golf course did in the, in the current year and what we're looking forward to for the next year. And so I'm going to allow, if you are okay, to have Patrick Kirkland, our golf manager from Hampton Golf, come up and, and let you know about the course. And then we'll get into the agenda item.
All right. Well, commissioners, mayor, city officials, thank you for having me here today. I'm happy to report that 2025 was another successful year. So my name is Patrick Kirkland. I'm the general manager at Echo Hills Golf Club. I work for Hampton Golf. I have been in place since June of twenty-two. So the goals this year were very similar to the goals last year, which is just to continue to increase our revenue, to increase our membership, to increase our food and beverage revenue. But we want to refine our approach and how we do these things so we can continue to add value to what we offer the community. And along, in order to do that, we purchased some new equipment for our maintenance folks. And it, it worked out tremendously. Our course conditions this year were the best that they have ever been. And you can ask anybody that plays our course and has been playing our course for a long time, and they will all agree with that. Our superintendent, Tim Missimer, and his staff did an incredible job. I even had people make comparisons to high-end country clubs that I won't mention, that our course conditions were better than theirs. So, so great job to my superintendent, Tim Missimer, and all of our staff this year. They did a fantastic job. We wanted to continue, obviously, with our cart path repaving and with other projects that I'll get into later on into my presentation. So a year in review, you can see there we did, we're projected to finish at just over one point two million dollars this year, which is a nine percent increase year to date. We're just at thirty-two thousand rounds played, which is a four percent increase over last year. Twelve percent increase in food and beverage revenue, nine percent increase in merchandise revenue, and ten percent increase in membership revenue. We're currently sitting at a hundred and fifty-one members, and this time last year we were sitting at a hundred and twenty-three. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to increase the value for the community. And thus, that increased membership sales increases this overall activity at the golf course. Some challenges, right? Everything, there's always challenges to a season as part of doing business. We've been in, going on this cart path repaving project since twenty-three. And the city's, you know, street department and paving crew do an incredible job for us. But we have some high lips or edges around the cart paths, you know, anywhere from two to five inches. And, you know, golfers aren't paying attention. They're playing golf, they're having a good time. They hit those lips or those edges and it damages the steering and the suspension on the golf carts. So we spent a lot of time and a lot of money on repairing golf carts this year. Another challenge was our irrigation system continues to struggle and fail. It's approaching forty years old. And we actually had a very large unexpected failure from our back nine backflow. And thank you to the city leadership for partnering with us to, to, to come up with the funds to make that large purchase and to the city's water crew for coming and helping install that. And that which saved us a lot of money instead of having an outside company come in and do that. So that happened at the end of July, and we know that August and September are, is our drought season. So we absolutely had to make, had to make that repair. And then another issue, but it's a good issue, is a good problem to have, is parking. So because we're so busy, parking continues to be an issue. We did address that this year by removing a square grass divider that was in our parking lot and then paved that. And that was all done in-house with, with the city. And that, we were able to pick up eight more parking spots, which definitely helped. Next slide, please. So memberships, as I mentioned earlier, we're currently sitting at a hundred and fifty-one memberships. We've had an increase of just under eleven thousand dollars. And, you know, all, all public golf course memberships are still very much a math game. You know, what's my break even number, right? The guy that, that once considered, will I save some money if I buy a membership or not? But there's a lot of our members that don't consider that when they're buying their membership. They want to be a part of a, of a thriving golf course, a golf course that is reinvesting back into itself. And so that, again, it gets back to the value. What is the value that we offer our community and to our members? And so one of the proposals that I'm, that we're proposing tonight is to eliminate a, a type of membership that we have. It's called a limited membership. We currently have twenty-six people that have this limited membership out of a hundred and fifty-one. And frankly, it devalues the memberships that we also sell. It's an antiquated membership that a lot of golf courses are really getting away from. So we're ready to just go ahead and cut ties with that type of membership. We've already seen a lot of those limited members converting to unlimited members. So I, it, I'm sure there'll be some upset customers, but, you know, they see the value that we're adding and it'll be fine. Another proposal that we're, that we're going to be talking about tonight is an increase in the daily green fees. And with that comes an increase to the membership rate. So the memberships will go up two hundred dollars, but that will exclude the junior membership. So the, currently the junior membership is four hundred dollars as for seventeen and younger. And we currently have twenty-one of those junior memberships, and that number continues to rise as well. But we're going to leave that at the same rate. So as I mentioned, the, one of the proposals that we're looking to make for next year so we can continue to grow is an increase of five dollars across all of our offerings for green fees. Market research shows that we are undervalued and underpriced for the value of our product in this area, especially on Friday through Sunday. So we're going to make Friday part of the weekend rate, which is what a lot of golf courses do in the area. So we will still have a senior rate, but it'll be Monday through Thursday. Friday will now be considered the weekend in our weekend rates. We still offer a senior discount on memberships, which a lot of courses do not. And the only stipulation is yet to be sixty-two years or older to qualify for that. And then we also, we still continue to offer online booking discounts, which can range anywhere from five to thirty percent savings. It just depends on the time of year and the time of day. So obviously, this time of year, the weather is not very good. There could be some very cheap golf hat. But in August, on a Sunday morning at eight AM, those rates, those online discounts aren't typically in place because that's peak season for us. So this slide shows the financial history of Echo Hills since two thousand. And I'll remind you that myself and Hampton Golf have been in place since twenty-twenty-two. And you'll see here that this, that last year, the golf course took no money from the general fund, and we're expected to do, to also not take any money from the general fund this year. You will also see that the expense line continues to grow at a steady pace, but it goes right along with our revenue line. So that's a, it's a typical and a healthy and growing business. So. This is our calendar events this year. It was a very busy and productive year. Our twenty-twenty-six calendar will be out before Christmas. We had many fun events this year. A couple to highlight, in May, we held, we had a Friday night date night series for nine holes of golf and then meals afterward on our patio, and it went off, went very well, had a lot of good feedback. My assistant pro, Chase Wilson, ran those events. And we'll be looking to offer that again and probably extend that into June and July next year. We had many golf outings this year. A lot of golf outings are coming from other courses and they're coming to us because of the incredible job that myself and my, and my staff do. And in, in September, Echo Hills had, for the first time ever, at, at Echo Hills, a girls' D-one sectional tournament, which is a pretty big deal in high school golf. So our, our course proved to be a fair but challenging layout, and I'm excited to continue to host that every year. My relationship with the Miami Valley Golf Association is very strong, and we look to, look forward to hosting more sectional and hopefully even regional tournaments in the future. So events this year, to continue on that trend, our couples golf events, we usually have one, if not two, per month, and they were very, they went off very, very well this year. We actually have couples driving from north of Cincinnati and down in Dayton to come up for our events. So the, the word is out that this is a, a great golf course and a great community, and people are traveling to come to our golf course. Our Glow Golf event continues to do very well. It's a very cool experience where we light up the course at night with LEDs and, and tiki torches and, and people decorate their, their golf carts and, and come wearing neat apparel. So it's a lot of fun. So I definitely, even if you don't play golf, come out and check it out sometime. We had our annual junior golf camp in June. This year, we offer two separate weeks to help accommodate kids and parents' schedules, as well as spread out the class size for volunteers and staff. And it went over very well. So I would ask community members who would like to help with the junior golf camp to come, please, meet with me in May. We could always use some extra help with the kiddos. So my favorite slide and, and what I look forward to and why I get up and do what I do every day is, is course improvements. If you know me, if you've ever worked with me or my staff that works, that works for me, they know that I like to know, what did we do today to be better than yesterday? And what are we going to do tomorrow to be better than today? So I'm all about progress. So this year was a very productive one for the maintenance crew. Over the winter, we rebuilt the bridge going over to the hole fourteen. It was rotting and in pretty dire shape. We also removed some trees that were overgrown and creating some grass growing concerns and playable area, specifically to the left side of number ten green. We also removed trees that were overgrown on hole sixteen for better playability and for sightlines off the tee. We planted over twenty trees since November, and these trees are planted in positions that will eventually help protect cars driving by there on the main road. Some of these trees are also positioned to help the golfer on certain holes, as well as present a better frame around certain greens. We continued with the cart path paving project that we've been working on since two thousand twenty-three. The city's street paving crew does a great job for us. The community should be very proud that the city has a talented group of people that, that know how to pave and can, we can do all this work in-house. It saves us a considerable amount of money than hiring an outside company to do this work. Here's some, a couple before and after photos. And the city's street crew even built that retaining wall on hole number seventeen there. That hole in that cart path was in the worst condition out of the whole golf course. And they built that retaining wall and they came in a few days later and, and completed that paving. It looks great. So it, they did a great job. So some improvements to the clubhouse. This year, we've been working with Brunner Construction on updating our doors and hardware. They've been looking very dated, had that old nineties gold flake in them and hasn't been functioning very properly. So we've been updating them to polish stainless steel with more current locking technology. We also removed that grass square divider that I mentioned earlier in my presentation and was able to pick up eight more parking spots right there. And again, that was all done in-house with the city's crew. So. We have many projects on our to-do list. I just want to say that we truly enjoy our work in the relentless pursuit of giving this community a golf course that they can be proud of. Some of those up there are that next year, we're going to be looking to hire, or looking to have design work done for bridge reconstruction from fifteen to sixteen. We need to make that wider and stronger so we can continue the cart path paving back in fourteen and fifteen, as well as remove some very large trees that are, needed, need to be thinned out and come down. We're also looking to hire an irrigation consultant to, to design a new irrigation system. Our system is approaching forty years old, as I mentioned earlier, is continually breaking down. If we don't have an irrigation system that works properly, we don't have a golf course. We're going to continue with the golf cart repaving project. We'll be looking to put in new sections of path in front of number twelve and then also from the maintenance building to eighteen cart path, finish thirteen and finish eighteen. And then we will also be looking to build a new tee box for nine red tee and fourteen gold tee. We're going to be looking to plant over one hundred arborvitae trees at the old parking lot to, to kind of create a little bit of privacy there. That's an old parking lot from the old clubhouse. It's, we use it as a working parking lot. We have piles of different types of sand and dirt and tree removal. So it's pretty unsightly from the road, so we're going to be planting those arborvitae trees to kind of help hide that a little bit. We're going to be doing some bunker refacing on hole number twelve and hopefully more. And we're going to continue to clear invasive tree and bush species from the back nine, specifically holes fourteen through sixteen, and return the golf course back to the original design. I have some photos that I can share with you from the golf course from the early nineties. And the back nine looks incredible, but it looks completely different than how it looks now. So our back nine is, is very well, very much overgrown and needs to be thinned out. Excellent. So here's our, here's our pup Stella. Just this past Friday, we, we received notification that she was selected to be the March, I call her the calendar girl, but the March dog of the, of the month in the two thousand twenty-six GCSAA calendar. So GCSAA stands for Golf Course Superintendent Association of America. This calendar goes out to every single golf course around the country and some golf courses around the world that they have a GCSAA member working at their site. So we're, you know, it's still pretty new to us. I think she was here today and some people got to meet her. But we're, we're going to do some fun events in March next year for the, for her month. I think we're going to have a little bit of Stella merch and have a little meet and greet with the, the calendar girl. So. She's great. If you haven't had a chance to meet her, you know, she's great at chasing frisbees. She also chases the geese around our golf course, keeps them off the course and helps picks up, pick up sticks. She knows who the members are that has treats in their golf bags, so she goes up to them and gets a couple treats. So. So anyways, thank you. That's my presentation. I would just encourage anybody that would like to come out and see what we've done and what we're planning on doing and, and have a more conversation about my vision for the golf course to shoot me an email and come out and I give you a tour of the course. So, thanks.
I have a question for you, if, if I may. I'll premise it by saying that when I came onto the commission, as we look back ten years, I think it's reasonable to say that we gave a million dollars from the general fund to the golf course just to keep it afloat. So that, that is the premise. Now it's really good to know that the golf course is at least neutral in terms of revenue and expenditures. Do you anticipate that with the changes in fees and things, we will be able to have a successful year again in twenty-six financially?
Absolutely.
And my understanding is about nine percent of, of Pickwa citizens use the golf course. So, you know, and I'm not criticizing that. I just think that, that again, if we only have nine percent of the citizens using the golf course, it's inappropriate to continue to have general revenue money go into the, the project for nine percent of the citizens. And that's not happening anymore. So I'm thankful for that.
And along with that, seeing some of the planned improvements, I'm glad that you're able to get so many improvements this year and still maintain that, that revenue positive. What's your plan kind of to continue banking additional reserves for those future improvements that you showed?
Yeah, we, we just continue to, to do in-house what we can. You know, obviously Hampton Golf, we're an outside company, but, you know, outside of Hampton Golf, we, we do a lot of our work in-house, either our own Hampton Golf staff. I have a great relationship with the city and every department within the city. So, you know, you should think of Hampton Golf as an extension, as like another department of the city. I mean, that's how close of an, of an agreement and working relationship that we have. So, you know, we continue to invest in new equipment, which makes the jobs, you know, be able to get done more efficiently with, you know, our staff as well. So.
Do you think you'll retain the number of players with the two hundred dollar increase in fees?
I do. I do. You know, as I mentioned earlier, You know, as I mentioned earlier, people that are playing our golf course, you know, they're coming from all over, and they see the value. And people are willing to pay if they see that their money is being reinvested back into the golf course. So will there be some hiccups and some upset customers? Of course, nobody likes change, right? But people see all the improvements that we're making. They're going to want to play, especially where the course conditions are as good as they are. They play other courses that charge more that are in less, like in less ideal shape than our courses. So it's a great value.
When was the last time that we raised the green fees?
In 2020, going into 2024, so it'd been two years ago.
And if this increase is approved, how long are you estimating that this would buy us until you would be back to raise them again?
I think the market would dictate that. You know, obviously, you don't want to lock yourself in, but we're not here to just continually raise increases. We do that with market research. We do that with, you know, the feedback that we get. We do that by watching the tee sheet. You know, if that parking lot's empty on a July day, there's a problem. So, you know, you just kind of, you feel it. You understand when you're there every day what, you know, what the business climate is, and you go with that. So, you know, I don't have a plan to raise rates every year, every two years, but I also want to stay competitive with what the other golf courses in the area are doing. We have too good of a product to be the cheapest course around.
Sure, that makes sense. And then one additional question for me. I believe I saw Mr. Yenney come in, and I've spoken with him a couple times. He lives out by the golf course. Can you talk to me or elaborate on what time in the morning the course starts to activate as far as the mowers leaving the garage and going out and the impacts that that has on the residents who live close to the golf course?
So during season, our tee times, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday start at 7:00 a.m. and Monday through Thursday, they start at 8:00 a.m. Typically, my staff will start one hour before the first tee time, and they start on the front nine because our rotation is off of number one. I know Mr. Yenney lives on 17. So by the time that we get to his house, you know, people have already been on the course for an hour. So, you know, he's very far away from the maintenance building in the direction that they're going when they start at 6:00 a.m.
I just wanted to bring that up and to make note of it, and I'm sure Mr. Yenney will come up and address this when it is that point in the meeting. And not just for Mr. Yenney, but for all of the property owners there. If it continues to be an issue or becomes an issue, your willingness to work with the property owners who surround you and trying to come up with some solution that everybody can live with would greatly be appreciated.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may, I was going to give a pretty detailed explanation as this is the first reading on this ordinance as to the changes that we are proposing.
All right ahead.
In section 94.02, we are proposing a change to membership language that activates a membership for 365 days from the date of purchase. In the past, memberships would expire at the end of the calendar year. This allows memberships to be sold throughout the year. So if you buy a membership in December, which a lot of people like to buy them as Christmas gifts, it is then valid for 365 days. In 94.03, this is a language change that speaks to what we were talking about with Stella. We just wanted to make sure that it doesn't, this language doesn't interfere with our activities to deter the geese on the course. The geese can be very destructive, and they're quite mean actually, and disrupt the play. The program that we have in place to deter the geese is permitted by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. In 94.05, this language change refers to the speed of play on the course. This is pretty typical of most golf courses where singles or doubles would be paired up to create foursomes that create efficiency on the course. We're also proposing to remove some of the language regarding dress code. We just, we don't have the staff or the ability to really monitor and police dress code. So we're just proposing to remove that language. Also adding some language that allows flexibility for the manager in regards to golf outings. Patrick has done a really great job of getting outings back to the course because he's very flexible, and this would allow him to negotiate and create those outings that people are looking for at the course. 94.06 is removing some language in regards to splitting membership payments. No one uses this language, to be quite honest, and nor is it really something that's favorable for accounting purposes. So we would propose to remove that. Ninety, and then, so that, those are the main items in language for the golf course, and we have a couple of items that relate to the parks specifically. In 94.23, the park rules. This allows an exception to the rules for special events and things that are planned in the parks after hours, and also adding and reflecting that we now have pickleball courts in the park. 94.26 relating to curfews and use of the linear park, just removing of some language that is not necessary or needed and updating the permitted hours of the linear park to match all of the other parks. Several years ago, we updated the language. It typically had said the parks were open or closed from dusk to dawn, and the police department actually asked us to name a specific time, and we chose 7:00 a.m. as the starting opening time. This allows police officers that are on patrol to have a clear-cut distinction of when people are allowed to begin using the parks each day. And we would, this language would make that match, that the path rules would then match all the other parks. And finally, the appendix with the rates and fees. Patrick gave you a pretty good explanation of the changes there. So this would be our first reading on this ordinance.
Jonathan Wessel.
Good evening, Jonathan Wessel. I live here in Pickwa. Just, it was a great presentation, first off, so I'm sorry.
I saw you get up to look at one of the.
It was hard to see some of the graphs.
I'll see if I can get a copy.
Yeah, I would just say that whenever those presentations can be included in the agenda packet, I think the public appreciates that. I know sometimes they're being worked on right up to the last minute, but if, you know, if they can get them made to way into the minutes or, you know, I think that's always a, that's always a good thing for everybody to see.
Agreed.
There was some conversation, and I would just note, and I was up to you guys, but some of the increases are definitely on the hefty side, up to a 33% increase just two years after the previous increase. So those are just kind of hefty there. In general, I'm just curious as to the thoughts of what the intention is in the future of the golf course. I understand that in the past, it was subsidized a little more heavily by the city. Now we're saying it's not subsidized. I'm assuming we're not going to see transfers the other way back into the general fund. But the golf course is still subsidized in some ways. They don't pay taxes, like property taxes, because it's still owned by the city, that kind of thing. So at what point are we really competing against other private entities when we're not subsidizing it and we're, you know, increasing rates to match? So again, no strong feelings either way. And then one comment on the linear park not being open until 7:00 a.m. I've been on the bike path before 7:00 a.m., especially in the summer. It is used before 7:00 a.m., so I'd maybe ask if that could be revisited. I understand the confusion with the dusk-to-dawn type comments, but ODNR uses those for hunting and fishing. They seem to figure that out. Maybe 6:00 a.m. is more appropriate than 7:00 a.m. if we need a hard time, but just a comment there. Thank you.
I would second the discussion about being on the bike path prior to 7:00 a.m. sometimes. When the mood strikes.
If I may, this is an item where I don't believe the police department is out looking for people that are using the linear park in a manner that is appropriate. This allows for instances when there is nefarious activity going on. This is just one tool in their toolbox. They will not be stopping people that are riding their bike for a legitimate purpose. This helps them as a tool.
So what are the intentions of the golf course? He asked pretty specific. To be self-sufficient, what, I mean, what are the intentions of the golf course?
The golf course, obviously, we would like it to not have to have a transfer from the general fund. You know, they've been successful in doing that the past two years. That's the intention moving forward, to continue to do well enough to build up a fund balance, to support some of the maintenance and other activities that need to occur. I think we're very pleased with how it's gone the last couple of years.
Do you have a ballpark sense of what the property tax is? I assume the city is paying it because the city owns it. I think that makes, no?
No, we do not pay property tax on the property.
Who pays it then?
No one. It's considered, it's city property. It's a park, essentially. We're not required to.
Okay, so nobody's paying, okay. Gotcha, thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Wessel that to have the increase, that $200.
Yeah, I would also mention that the rates did go through the park or the golf advisory board, who is made up of golfers at the course, and they understand, you know, what we're looking at and why these increases are being suggested. We feel like the course, as Patrick said, is a great value. The course was in incredible condition this year compared to a lot of other courses that really struggled with the drought. And Tim is doing a fabulous job. So we feel like that even with the increase, this is a great value.
Yeah, I think to Commissioner Vedder's point, a couple of years ago, when the fund was not positive, there's a lot of discussion about possibly stopping that golfing venture. And so part of the way that that can be maintained is with increased rates, that they're actually paying for the cost of what it takes to operate it. And I, you know, I would thank the golfing committee to, you know, that they are recognizing that and working with us on making sure that the prices are appropriate to the expenses that they're incurring.
Kim Isley.
I have a question. I actually was at the park board, the last park board meeting. And if there's no quorum, what exactly does that mean if there's no quorum? Do I have to ask my questions and then you guys answer me that? My question, though, is that if there's no quorum, they actually weren't able to, the last two meetings, not even able to approve the minutes from the meetings before. So they couldn't really vote on anything or move stuff along. So I guess my question is, how did this make it to the commission if there was no quorum to be able to pass it? That's one question. Another question. The language was added to make the membership different, right? To, for 365 days a year instead of at year-end. I understand that. But with that, does that mean that we're paying Hampton Group to run it 365 days a year? So like even in the wintertime, when it's not possible to go out and golf, does that mean we're still paying for staff? Because that membership, I mean, I don't know if the clubhouse is open, whatever. So that's my other question. Also, at the park board meeting, there was a question that was kind of concerning the younger generation, the kids in school that was taking golf, and how, I think that it was specific about the price of the balls. And there was some kind of confusion where it seemed like the golf course wasn't either allowing them very many balls or there wasn't enough, there wasn't like a discount or something. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is it'd be really nice if we have such a nice golf course that we be good stewards of the students and try to give them a break if they're wanting to go that route. And I know at the time, it was mentioned that, you know, some students have to actually have a membership, $400. Well, that is kind of crazy. You know, these kids are in school, they're not working even. And I don't think we require that, but it was mentioned that, you know, it's a lot better than some places because that's. So anyways, that is a kind of concern. I would be on the student's side to try to lower those fees for them because you don't want, you don't want to go through school and have really good talent, but then also have that stress of having to figure out how to pay for that just to be a part of a club. And the last thing is, is there any, I've heard some kind of horror stories of folks out on the golf course. Are there any penalties, like in the rules and stuff, that are consequences or penalties if there's something like way, you know, if they're like entirely drunk, can't walk straight, and they're screaming and yelling, whatever? Is there any recourse for that from?
You have to take it strong.
Recourse for who? The golf course or?
Maybe, maybe I don't know what recourse means. I mean, is there any?
Consequences?
Consequences for the folks that's actually doing that so that doesn't continue to happen over and over again? I mean, you know, like either raise the rates or a warning or, you know, something like that. And about the outings. I know that kind of left it wide open for them to be able to negotiate on the outings and stuff. It seems very subjective and may not necessarily be fair. Like if there's a party that somebody likes, they can get in a lot cheaper than, you know, a party maybe they don't like, and they can just raise the rates. It just seems like it's very subjective and not fair if it's not, you know, a particular price for everyone. I think that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. So there wasn't a quorum at the park board, but the park board, was it the park board that heard this or the golf advisory committee?
So both boards heard. We took it to both of them, and the park board members that were present didn't have concerns with what we are presenting. There was not a quorum to vote to actually recommend it, but the golf advisory board did recommend.
So that's where the recommendation comes from?
Yes.
Okay. And are we paying Hampton 365 days a year?
They have a set contract, and during the offseason or, you know, the inclement weather over the winter, the staff is extremely limited. It's essentially the manager, the superintendent, and we have a mechanic. And they do stuff all year long, even though the course may not be open. Although any day that the weather is acceptable, it is open. We do have golfers out there in extremely cold temperatures. We do have golfers out there in extremely cold temperatures. They want to get out there whenever they can. But that's very typical of a golf course to really have a skeleton crew. We're not mowing or anything like that, so we don't have those employees on the course.
Okay.
If I understood correctly from last year too, things, certain services like the pro shop and the kitchen are still available year-round. And that was before this change, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not 100% year-round. You know, there will be days that even the clubhouse is closed. But certainly it is open at times for people to buy memberships, merchandise.
This change in the membership length isn't changing that schedule at all, though?
No. This is a benefit to the people buying a membership.
Is it possible to give students a break on the golf balls and then?
So what Ms. Heisler was referring to was a discussion that we had at the park board about the high school golf teams utilizing the course and what they were charged. The students aren't paying anything. We have three high schools using the course for, you know, practice and competitions. The school districts are charged for the use of the facility. If they choose to charge the students, I don't believe that they do, but I don't know. We're not a party to that. So the students actually get a very good deal to utilize the course. The districts pay for the use of the course and the range. So they're paying for the range balls. We feel like that is also a really good deal for the school districts. You know, they maintain all of their other sports fields and things that cost them a lot of money. We are, you know, this golf course costs a lot of money to maintain and keep in a good playable condition. And the high schools certainly utilize it. And, you know, that is obvious by the fact that it was chosen to host the district golf meet, which is incredible. That's an incredible honor for the course.
Chief Byron, does the laws that govern public drunkenness and disorderly conduct in the rest of the city, do those laws apply to the golf course?
Yeah, it certainly could, yes.
Any reports of people drunk on the golf course?
I don't recall seeing any, but I don't.
I don't ever remember.
And I will say on that topic that Patrick does a great job of, when something is brought to his attention, he has asked people to leave the course before, if they are being disruptive or doing something inappropriate out on the course. You know, so if that occurs, reporting it is the first step. And he does a good job trying to take care of that.
All right. And the outings, the section about the outings being left to Patrick's ability to determine, is that fair? Or is it subjective?
It's, I think you could tell by Patrick's presentation, his goal is to make that course the best it can be. And that includes bringing outings to the course, making sure that people want to be there. And what he's doing with outings is only meant to get more of them.
So you're saying it's not going to be subjective?
I mean, it's not subjective. It's, he has a goal in mind when he agrees to allow an outing at the course that it's going to be worth the times that it's taking up for public golfing. So it has to meet, you know, certain criteria that it's a good outing, they have enough golfers to make it worth it for them to essentially utilize the entire course for a span of time. So he's going to make sure that it's going to make money.
Okay. All right. Steve Yenney? Oh. Did you want to talk on this one? Could you put 18, 19, yeah, Steve Yenney.
Yeah, good evening. I really didn't want to come twice, but I was going to come on a second one. But Steve Yenney, my property shares the largest open border with the golf course. It's probably the largest border with the golf course period. It's number 16 and number 17, a large portion. That path that he showed in his presentation that just got redone, the one that was in such bad shape, that's my backyard on the other side of it. Retaining walls here and there is a string fence there in my backyard, bottom of it. I'm not going to go through, I didn't see the whole presentation. There was definitely some things about when they start going in the morning that simply aren't true. I have video proof, audio proof, whatever you want. As far as drunkenness, there was a guy so drunk, I don't think it was this, it wasn't this past year, he was so drunk on number 17 tee, which is my backyard, that he couldn't even operate his golf cart. There was nothing wrong with his golf cart. His buddies had to put him on the golf cart with them, drove back, left the golf cart. And then somebody had to come back from the golf course. And there was a storm roll. And the only reason I know this, it was a storm roll and then I had to be getting things I had sitting out put away. And so I saw the whole thing. I think I've got some video of that as well. There was a lot of drunkenness. Number 17, there's maple trees and a linen tree right off the side of the tee. Guys are too lazy to wait until, well, so number 16 tee is right up by where the bathrooms, right there. It's the old clubhouse. And in 2016, the city actually expanded the sewer line and ran it all the way through our property, down the easement. So those bathrooms would be operable. It used to be a porta potty sitting in the old parking lot all year long. And that's what they used, but nobody ever used it. Now they've got bathrooms there. And they still, they go off to the side of number 17. Guys do all the time, stand behind a tree and just urinate. Is that acceptable? And, you know, they say call the police. By the time the police would get there, you know, I've called the police. There's reports, I can, you can check, there's a few reports. There's never been anything done. So I really didn't want to talk about this. My main question is, the golf course used to be open or closed by ordinance in January and February. I guess in 2022 Hampton Golf told them to change it and it got passed by the commission. And now it's open in January and February. Jerry, AM Minister O'Brien, the finance director, posted a September 2025 report on the website, on the financial page of the website. And it's a report I've never seen. It's, you know, it's 12 months and then year-to-date and has all the things broken down. I think it's a report you guys get every month. That's what he told me it was. And I said, well, I've never seen anything like this. And it had the golf course broken out. And I noticed that, I think in January and February, they lost $55,000 and $55,000. And I think they lost money and it went all the way back, of course, to October 2024 as well. And I think they definitely lost money in November 2024 and December 2024. I can understand why it's open in November and December. I really can't understand why it changed, you know, why it was changed by the commission to open it in January and February. We've had a couple mild winters where, yeah, maybe it paid off in February. They've opened the course, I think, in 2023, 2024, and 2025 in February. But it'd be, you know, they're losing money. So that's my biggest question is why is it open in January and February? It just doesn't make sense to me, especially January. I think January 2023, maybe you had some exceptionally warm days. But, you know, if you think, if you go back and look, probably pretty big losses. And this winter is predicted to be a really bad one. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Why is the golf course want to open in January and February?
So the loss that you're seeing there is not a result of the course being open. Over the winter is when we do maintenance on the golf carts. So, and the equipment. We'll do our reel sharpenings, mower blade sharpenings. All, you know, all of our annual maintenance on our equipment is done in the winter. So we have costs associated with that. This has been historically always. It has nothing to do with the course being open. It's just, and we continue to have expenses even in January and February. We have utilities, we have our, you know, other contract costs. So it's not a result of the course being open. And the revenue for the course is cyclical, of course. We are going to make revenue in mostly the summer months, spring, fall, and not during the winter because we're not open all the time.
Okay, any other questions? There's no other, no other public comment questions. I'll consider that a first reading. Next on the agenda is O-20-25.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2026, a first reading.
Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance is the appropriations that we're proposing for 2026. And this is based on our budget that we put together. And once passed by the commission, this will become our initial legal budget and will give us authority to spend money at 1126. Excuse me. So we are presenting a budget workshop on the 25th. And we'll be presenting more detailed numbers and diving down into these numbers through the commission. And at that time, we'll be able to answer, you know, a lot of questions. And so whatever questions that we have tonight, we'd like to get together and get information, more detailed information for those questions and bring those to the budget workshop. And then also on the second reading.
Can we make whatever PowerPoint that we have for that meeting available to the public before the meeting?
Well, right now, we're still putting some finishing touches on that, so it wouldn't be ready right away.
Well, just so people who want to come to that, it is an open session, but, you know, they may have, and I don't know if they're talking at that, it's a work session, right? They're not talking, but people need to be prepared, so.
Yeah, we could put it out there once it's finalized. And we'll try to get that done as quickly as possible. I mean, it is pretty much, but we still had a few pieces of information that we were still putting in there. So once we get that finished, then we could do that.
Any other questions from commission? No?
Kim Heisler.
I know you guys are still in the process of working those together. I understand that. But from, based on what's in here, you do have some kind of ideas of what that's going to be. I have a few notes I'd just like to ask about. And then maybe when you guys have your, well, if you can tell me now, that would be great. And actually, section one, city building operation and maintenance, $314,000. We, I think you guys just spent a bunch of money updating the elevators and stuff. What are those amounts for? Because actually, it turns out to be like a half a million with the operation, maintenance, and the capital outlay, including labor. So that's hugely significant. And, you know, I only see parts of this building and it looks like it's in really good shape. So $500,000 just seems a lot. And just curious as to what that would be going for. Also, the city manager in section one, personnel services and administrative support, $403,000. What that is for? That seems quite high also. And then down towards the bottom on that first page, page 46, income tax. Now, we have Rita working on income tax. So my question is, if this department no longer exists, why does this exist? And it says operation and maintenance, $615,000. Plus the 54, 36, 386. So close to $670,000 for a department that doesn't exist or is outsourced. Planning and zoning, that's on page 47, $524,000. Personnel services, administrative support. That seems, wow, I'd just like to know what that's for. And just confirmation down there in transfers, the transfer to Parks Fund and to the Safety Fund, that's like 1.89 million and 3.29, just to kind of go over that. Section six, Park and Recreation Fund. Operation and maintenance, I can guess, but I'd really like to hear what you guys have to say for that 1.13 million. And the capital outlay. Section 15, there's appropriation appropriated from the CB, CDBG 25 Fund. Probably just need to know what those acronyms mean. I think I might know what this is too. This is section 37, the wastewater system fund. The capital outlay, 12 million. But I'd like to hear what that is too. City income tax administration fund, 407, section 39, 15 and a half million. And then the golf course fund, 1.1 million. About 1.4 when it comes to labor. Section 42, the Fort Pickwa Plaza Fund, $640,000, operation and maintenance. Some of this stuff is probably because there's no way to understand how this stuff actually works. We can't usually ask for information. And if we don't know what it's called, we can't get documents for. So it is kind of good to at least get a little bit of information on this. Section 34, ed improvements?
Your time's up.
I need to, that ed, what that means, ed. Okay, thanks.
So Jerry, the city building, the $314,000, what are these amounts for?
Mayor, I can jump in. A lot of these questions will be answered at the work session. And if they're not, they'll be available for the meeting on December 2nd. We don't have the breakdown right now to sit and educate the public on what the, what these questions are. I mean, it's not really germane to the first reading. So we'd like to go through the work session. Much of this will get answered. What isn't answered in the work session, we'd be happy to answer on the second reading.
Which is why we're having the work session, is that correct?
And three readings.
So we will answer all of these?
We've taken notes.
I've been over here taking notes. In fact, I'd like clarification, see if anybody else picked up her question on section 42.
Yeah, operation and maintenance.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we'll, that's what, we'll take all these questions and incorporate these into the presentation and get everybody's questions answered.
Can you maybe give a, I guess, a brief overview of what your presentation's going to contain during the work session? Is it essentially a breakout of the details behind all these kind of high-level numbers?
So the presentation, for the most part, will be graphs of the amounts comparing previous years and this year's budget. And then we'll take, get into, I mean, there are some things that we're wanting to explain, and we'll answer people's questions. And also, now that we're getting other people's questions, we'll get into those details and just have a narrative answering those questions.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? No other public comment cards on this issue? More to come on, from the work session on this. That'll serve as a first reading. Next on our agenda is ordinance number O-21-25, a first reading.
An amended ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2025.
Mayor and Commissioners, so this is an ordinance that we bring every year toward the end, now that we're winding down operations and we're finding where we may have, you know, not estimated correctly on some things. So we're fixing that. We're, you know, trying to estimate out to the end of the year, so if we have whatever expenditures we have going out to the end of the year, that we'll be able to cover those. So there were a few items that we have here that we're increasing the appropriations for. The total increase was about $90,000.
Mayor, I'd like to add also, this is standard. Every year, we do this, the three readings. So there's the three readings for the budget for the next year, and there's three readings for appropriations to solidify the budget numbers for this year so that we can have a clean audit at the end of the year. So this is just a housekeeping item. No matter where you go, localities, sewer districts, everybody does the same thing to true the books up at the end of the year because the budget is just an estimation of costs, and true costs have to be reconciled at the end of the year.
Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, Jerry, I notice the first account where need an increase in appropriation is actually for one of the first accounts that Ms. Heisler flagged in next year's budget. So I'm going to ask the question about the additional $30,000 in this account and ask her question of, it's an operation and maintenance account there where we're increasing it by $30,000. You've explained why you need the $30,000 because the fees charged were higher than expected. But can you explain to me what that larger number is and why we have budgeted or are going to pay $597,103 on the income tax level for this fiscal year?
Yeah, so we pay, you know, Rita's fees are based on collections. So there's a, you know, percentage of the collections that we pay them fees with. So they're, because collections increased a little bit, the fees increased a little bit. So that's what's going through this account. Then at, later on, after the year, they come back and true that number up and, you know, based on refunds or whatever, if there's money, you know, paid back to the city, and there has been in the past, then they do that. So then they true it up later. So that's what these are based on, the collections that we're getting.
Got it. So in simple math, and I'm sure these numbers are way off, but if Rita collects $20 million of income tax for the city of Pickwa, then there is a percentage or a fee that Rita charges us to do that collection, and that is what is reflected in this. Again, I made those numbers up.
That is, that is correct. That's the idea behind it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Is that why we still have an income tax department?
Yes. We're still running the fees through there and paying those.
Okay. Any other questions from commission? Kim Heisler. All right. That'll serve as a first reading. Next is resolution number R-117-25.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal agreement with Hampton Golf for Echo Hills Golf Course.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second piece of legislation that we touched on earlier when Patrick gave his presentation. In 2023, the city entered into a three-year agreement with Hampton Golf to provide management services for the course. You know, we had had lengthy discussions with them about what their goals were for the, these three years. And the main one being, we would like to see the course break even at minimum, and we are seeing that now. We've been very pleased with the efforts of Hampton Golf. We feel like they've really upped the game and increased the value of membership and utilization of the course is way up. So we are asking tonight, as part of this resolution, to allow the city manager to renew the contract with Hampton Golf.
What percentage increase is the contract?
The way the contract reads, it's nominal, it's based on the CPI. So it depends on what the consumer price index is for that year.
You said that they were, they've been running it for the past three years?
Yes.
And the past two years have been revenue, revenue neutral or positive?
Correct.
And the previous 10-ish years were revenue negative?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd say they're doing not too bad of a job, then.
Any other questions from commission?
No. Really do like Hampton Golf, though. Good presentation tonight.
Kim Heisler.
I'm just curious. A lot of times, the contracts or agreements are actually attached, and I'm wondering why it's not attached in here now. It would be kind of nice to see what that agreement is, even, even though they're renewing it for another three years. So I guess my question is, where is it and why is it not in here? That's it.
Is that it? Where's the contract?
Mayor, this, this is a renewal of the previous contract that this, and this allows the city manager to simply renew the contract. It's not that the commission is reviewing the terms of the agreement at this point. It's just allowing the city manager to do so.
And the $531,000 is per year or for the three years?
That's for 2026. And that includes, I will say, that includes the payroll for all of the employees and the management and the marketing of the course.
I guess to expand on Commissioner Simmons' question, the term is for three years, but the cap is, seems only to cover one year. Can you help make that make sense?
Right. So we discussed this. I discussed this with the finance director. You know, we don't know specifically what the CPI will be for the remaining two years. So we couldn't put an exact dollar amount in here, and this is typically how a three-year agreement is structured. This is what we always do.
So if in year two, the cost goes up, how will we know that?
That'll be in the 2027 budget.
Okay. Discussion there.
Why would we not have language in the contract that ties it to, that says this ties it to CPI?
That language is in the contract.
That is in the contract.
Yes.
But the contract's not attached, which was Kim's point.
Is there any?
So we didn't get to see it.
Is it tied to CPI unbounded, or is there any kind of boundaries on that?
I'm sorry, I.
Is there any kind of boundaries on if CPI goes through the roof by like 10% in two years? Is it, is it unbounded on the contract side, or is there some exemption for extreme CPI changes?
Yeah, no, it's simply based on the CPI, which even over the last several years with high inflation have, has not been above three, I believe.
Mayor, I can help out. So if you recall, when we transitioned from a city-run golf course to a contracted partner, we held a work session, we walked through the contract, we talked about all these terms. The contract came before the commission. So this isn't new. This is just simply a renewal of that same contract language. It just.
I hear, I hear you. But what I'm saying is, I think people would like to see the contract and the contract language, even though it's, it's the same as, as before, I guess.
Well, it's a public record. It's for the last three years. It could have been requested. I mean, it's, we can include it in the packet for next year, but not knowing it was an issue, we've, when we bring back renewals, we very infrequently do we attach a contract to it because you've already approved it.
Steve Yeney.
Steve Yeney, again, I'm affected by the golf course. I want to say Hampton Golf has been very profitable, a lot of revenue. Revenue is the word you're looking for. Lots of revenue, way more revenue than ever. No doubt about it. With that revenue comes problems. And I want to correct something. Actually, for 2023, I believe their loss was $139,000. The year before that, 2022, I believe it was $149,000 operating loss. So in Hampton, according to this contract, commenced service on December 1st, 2022. But this contract wasn't approved by the city until 2023 January. It wasn't signed by the city manager until January 27th of 2023. So that's a question. Because I, when that came up in 2023, I saw it. I called the next day. I saw it over the weekend. I called and tried to get a copy of contract, and they said, well, you can't have one. I said, well, let me know. They said, you'll be able to get it after, after the meeting's over. This contract is marked confidential on the footer of every single page. But that's not really, I don't think that's the issue. The way I read this contract, the city, if they wanted to terminate this contract, would have had it notified Hampton 90 days ago. And you're getting this contract, you know, it's technically expires, I think, at midnight on November 30th. So you got it 12 days. Why didn't it put on, you know, why wasn't it put on a meeting before now? And you guys, I don't know if anybody ever saw the contract. I tried to get it in 2023, didn't file a records request, but nobody would give it to me. This year, I had no problem. I submitted a request through Next Request. Yeah, got it, no problem, almost immediately. But my big question is, how do you approve a contract in January 2023 and sign it and make it retroactive? And also, when did Hampton Golf actually get involved? Because as far as I know, as far as managing the clubhouse, they were involved in the summer of 2022. Because I started, I started noticing way more problems. Revenue was higher for 2022, higher for 2023, colossal, I think, for 2024. Jerry gave me an interim report. So that's all I think I have. But, you know, why is it here tonight? 11th hour. You guys got to prove it. You don't have it in front of you. If you want my copy.
Thanks, Steve. I'll give it back to you. All right. So when did Hampton Golf get involved with the city back in, was it 2022 or 2023?
We don't have that information with us. You're talking about something that happened over three years ago.
You did tell us. Okay.
I'll be happy to get that information to you, Mayor, but we don't have it in front of us.
Is he right about being, they have to give 90 days' notice?
Yes, that's the, that's the clause that we would utilize if we wanted to.
Be canceled.
Sorry. That is the term in the contract that we would utilize if we wish to get out of a contract while it was in place.
And that's standard language for pretty much all our contracts.
But that, that didn't cover the natural expiry of the three years, did it?
Correct.
Okay. So we, if we were to not renew, we weren't obligated to give them 90 days' notice that we were not going to renew?
Correct.
There's only 90 days if we wanted to get out early.
Correct.
It is a resolution. I have no other questions. I would have liked to have seen the contract attached to the staff report.
Mayor, we'll make sure that we do that with renewals from here forward.
I guess I need a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution R-117-25.
Second. Moved and seconded. Kind of a roll call.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Commissioner, uh, Mayor Lee?
No.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Resolution number R-118-25.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Miami Valley Risk Management Association for purchase of insurance.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This resolution before you is a resolution to put forward in a renewal for Moverma. The city partners with the Miami Valley Risk Management Association for the purpose of participating in a risk management pool for property and liability insurance. This resolution will continue our contract for the 2026 year.
Any questions from commission?
Is this any higher than last year's?
Yes, it is. It's 19% higher than last year.
What would be the reason for that?
According to our executive director at Moverma and our broker, who is a client, there were a couple of reasons for this. One is it's a hard market this year. Another was our purchase of cybersecurity coverage. Another was unexpected claims in the pool. There are 21 cities that participate in the pool. So there were some unexpected claims in the pool this year. But the, the most significant reason was an increase in our SR, SI, excuse me, SIR. We went from $500,000 to $1 million that we had to purchase for self-insured retention. And we purchased that through JEM, which is our self-reinsurer, and that is government entities mutual.
Any questions, other questions from commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I will need to recuse myself from voting on this resolution.
We don't need to vote on that. You just recuse yourself. That's fine.
Is there a reason why you're recusing yourself?
Yes, I have actually joined one of the lawsuits.
One of what lawsuits?
Against the city. I've joined the list of plaintiffs. Mayor notes.
You're suing the city?
I am in the list of plaintiffs that are suing the city, yes.
Thank you. Kim Heisler.
Okay, another question, same as last time. Where is the policy for this? Is this for the Miami Valley Risk? I mean, is this kind of like, I'd equate it to like getting auto insurance, right? We have like certain different levels of insurance that we're getting and stuff like that. So I would almost assume there should be some kind of a policy that could be attached here so we can actually see what we're actually getting for this. So where is the policy? And then what actually does this policy get us? And I know you had mentioned earlier that part of the reason that the price went up was the purchase of cybersecurity. I'm kind of curious why the insurance would go up with that instead of down, since, I mean, does that make sense to you? I would think if you got cybersecurity, that's going to make it a lot safer, so you won't need as much insurance.
Yes, cybersecurity insurance, we bought an additional policy.
Additional policy for cybersecurity?
Yes.
Correct.
For prevention.
Yeah.
And then when you mentioned another reason it went up was because claims in the pool, could you explain that? I know you said there was multiple, you missed a.
The pool consists of, I don't know how many cities she said, but.
21.
21 cities.
So that mean like claim, like if each?
I'm sorry.
So does that mean that the folks that's in that pool, if everybody, claims, does that mean like lawsuits? Or does that mean like, like auto accidents, repair?
Will ask.
That's, yeah.
I'll ask.
And then you also mentioned the being selfish insured through GEM. So is that in addition to this, or is that a part of this? I guess this is my questions, thank you.
So where's the policy at?
So Mayor, I can jump in with that because, okay.
I might actually like to answer that because I was under the impression that Ms. Heisler had already made a public records request for that policy, and it had been provided. And those records had been released in detail.
So she's got a copy of it?
I believe so.
Okay. And what does it get us?
What does Moverma?
Yeah, what does Moverma get, what protection does it provide?
It's property and liability insurance.
Okay. And claims, what does, what does that mean? What is a claim?
Right, it's, it is, it does include lawsuits, it includes accidents, it's anything property or liability related. I know that that's, I continue to say that, it's very broad, yeah.
About the 21 different cities?
It's not workers' comp.
Yeah.
You know, but it's anything outside of workers' comp that we're not, that we don't have immunity from, Mayor.
All right.
And I'd also like to clarify that GEM is our reinsurance, that we don't have self-insurance through GEM, GEM is the reinsurance.
That's the SIR?
SIR means reinsurance.
Yeah.
GEM is not, GEM.
Not self-insurance.
Is not self-insurance, GEM is reinsurance, SIR is self-insurance.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from Commission? I will ask.
All right, these rates are going up because of claims within the pool, partially. So I guess I'd just be curious to ask Commissioner Simmons, who just acknowledged that he's suing the city, I guess how much money are you trying to get out of the city that would potentially be covered by this?
You might want to ask my counsel.
I'm asking you.
You can ask my counsel. You can talk to my lawyer.
Commissioners. I need a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution number R-118-25.
Second. Moved and seconded, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons. refrain. Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Homan.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass.
Aye.
All right. Next on our agenda is Resolution number R-119-25.
A resolution to authorize an economic development loan to the Pickwa Improvement Corporation.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item is what will allow the Pickwa Improvement Corporation to finance certain improvements that will enable the relocation of the existing business office located at 128 South Main Street. And in doing so, allow that property to be assembled with the adjacent properties along South Main Street that the City of Pickwa has previously acquired over the course of the past several years. You might recall there were three or four derelict structures along that block that were removed utilizing grant dollars from the state of Ohio to be able to remove the blight and then put, put the property in a position to be able to be acquired for future redevelopment opportunities, such as the one that we have before us now. What is being proposed is upon the relocation of the existing business office at the corner of Wood and Main Street, the lot would then be cleared and assembled with the other lots I just mentioned. And that would allow for private development interests to be able to construct 30 new fee simple, market rate townhomes on that property. Very attractive structures, there's a rendering in your packet there. This developer, Charles Sims Development Corp., has done this product or this type of product in a number of communities, including Dayton and Springfield more recently. And if you've been in downtown Springfield and seen some of the positive activity happening, these improvements are part of it. And if you get the chance to go take a look at them, I highly recommend it, they're really nice looking apartments. In fact, one of our local bank presidents actually has an office over there, is part of his affiliation with Park, and lives in one of these units and was kind enough to let me take a look, see. The finishes and the workmanship are very, of a very high quality. At the completion of the project, you'll have, as I mentioned, 30 market rate fee simple units for sale to be owner occupied. And that would be a tremendous addition to our housing inventory, as that type of product is very limited currently. And we hear from the real estate community quite often that it's something that's highly desirable. I saw some questions or received some questions. I think there was a question about parking, the way it's proposed. And bear in mind, this is simply to allow the process to move forward with executing the different development agreements that would be necessary. So Pickwa Improvement Corporation would in fact execute a development agreement with RT Quinter Investments, the owner of the property, and then also with Charles Sims Development Corp., the entity that would be building the new improvements. And likewise with the City of Pickwa for the city's participation in terms of water and sewer utilities and streetscape improvements. But at the end of the day, when they complete the improvements, the 30 townhomes will front both Main Street in a new pedestrian promenade, I'll call it, along the rear of the property, which is where there's an alley alignment today. And that will create connectivity for the pedestrians to the Ohio to Indiana Trail. And between the two rows of buildings is a common area that is effectively their driveway or their entrance to and from the rear of the buildings where there is a garage that's tucked underneath each one of these units. So everything that they do here would be subject to all of the planning commission purview or city commission approvals permitting any other development standards or regulatory requirements. It would all have to go through those usual and customary processes to receive the appropriate permits and approvals. This simply, again, allows Pick to be able to finance the upfront improvements to relocate the existing office, and in doing so, enable the project to move forward. And as a result of the improvements, increase the property valuations significantly over the gravel lots that exist there today. So that increase in property valuation then is able to be recaptured, and that then comes back in, in the form of a pilot payment and pays the city back for this investment over a period of time. Happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions from Commission?
Yeah, Mr. Schmiesing, I think the, the, the last point, can you, can you say that again?
Yeah, the way the, the deal structure will work, so a component of these development agreements will be that the city would be asked to create a downtown revitalization district, which is a statutory tool that allows for the increase in valuation that occurs as a result of a development in an area that you're trying to revitalize, to be captured as a payment in lieu of taxes, instead of it going to the taxing entity as it normally would. Doesn't disturb their existing tax flow, it just allows for that increase that the developers' substantial investment has created. And then it can flow back to the community to pay for eligible costs, including those things that we've described here, the reading of the site, the demolition of the building, the relocation of the office, water and sewer utilities.
So this is what the Economic Development Loan Fund was created to do?
Yes, this is very much an example of the types of projects that the loan fund is intended to excite.
And then while we have the upfront cost, as this project moves forward, that money is replenished, so then we can do this again.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How affordable are the apartments that they're proposing?
These are a market rate product, fee simple, so they're each individually owned. And then there's common area, and there's an HOA involved. Their target price point is 300,000. It's a three-story walk-up unit, so it's a ground level entry, nice porch or portico. Then you go up your steps, the first level is the primary living space, and then the third floor is your bedroom area. Typically, they're a two-bedroom product, some folks might ask for it to be upgraded to three. But the, the target price point is 300,000, which I would point out that this developer has had success with, with doing this in other communities through this formula that they've created, if you will, in terms of focusing on good locations that make a lot of sense, where they can induce a market that doesn't currently exist. That is, there's not a lot of comparable products. So by doing what they're doing and working closely with the, the city and its CIC to be able to achieve the outcomes we're all trying to accomplish, they can create a new product in the community's housing inventory that starts off at a very reasonable market rate, even though it's a very high-quality product. And then what you'll see in the subsequent sale cycles is that product will begin to increase in value or resale, simply because it's moving towards where that price point ought to be for that type of product.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
Jonathan Wester.
Good evening, just one question, which, this economic development project, curious if any city staff entered into a non-disclosure agreement, or if we were able to get this one done without that kind of agreement.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Is there an NDA on this?
Unlike larger commercial industrial projects where there's a lot of corporate interest and trademark secrets that they're very sensitive to, which by the way, an NDA is pretty common on large industrial economic development projects, this is more of a residential variety, a smaller scale, if you will. So no, there is no NDA here, or is it necessary?
David Smith.
I ain't gonna give you guys a hard time like I normally, don't be nice tonight. First thing, I don't agree with anything you guys are doing, given that man right over there, any power to do anything. You guys proved at the last meeting that you cannot be trusted at all, 100%, with nothing you guys are doing. Nothing. Now, you guys are doing things behind the scenes that you really might want to consider you shouldn't be doing, like, you know, I don't know, mentioning people, talking about, we need to get this guy arrested, talking about places people used to live, and it's, it's not good, it's a bad look for someone to have someone else living with them when they've sued the city. You know exactly what I'm talking about, you do, and you do. There's been communications about me trying to get me arrested because y'all like what I'm saying. You guys have passed messages around about me living with Paul, how it's unbelievable. Sound familiar? Exactly. I suggest y'all get your ducks in a row and straighten your stuff out. This is coming to an end. I'm done playing. You guys messed with my life once, you cost me my house, my wife, my family. I move in with Paul, y'all start screwing with Paul. Don't sit there and be looking around like you, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I don't know what the problem is with you guys and not liking people confronting you on your BS, but your insurance went up because you guys are screwing with people and you're losing in court. I'm fixing to get you again. What I found out today has gotten me so pissed. I'm coming after you guys' jobs, I'm coming after your houses, I'm coming after anything you might have, I'm coming to take. I'm sick of this with y'all. People come in here and express their feelings, and you guys don't care. You don't give a rat's ass about nobody in this town. You guys are making decisions before you come in here, and then you play this little farce of a play, or you act like you're disgusting, because when you've already made the decisions to do what you're doing, we found that out at the last meeting because he told us. You guys do understand, you guys are breaking all kinds of laws, right? Federal laws. Right? The fact that, that you guys talk behind the scenes about people in this community and things that were said, about plotting, that's called collusion. Now, a lot of law decisions are made in this town by someone who does not have a law degree. Do you have a law degree, Mr. Oberdorfer?
Can't ask him any.
That's a federal crime right there, because you're acting under the color of law, and you're acting outside the bounds of your office. You might want to stop. So if you guys think, I don't know what I'm talking about, you already know I do. I took you to court once on beach, I'm fixing to do it again because you guys violated that one. Everybody in this town understands what you guys are about now. Everybody. So I would highly suggest you pray to Jesus that these people don't decide to take you guys to court individually, because it can be done several times. And none of you got the money it would take to defend yourselves, none of you do. And your insurance is fixing to go up again next year, by the way, a whole hell of a lot, more than 19% this time. Have fun, y'all enjoy yourselves.
Thank you. Kim.
Just two questions. The 300,000, is that considered entry level, or is that? To me, I mean, it seems like that's quite, quite expensive to revitalize and to bring people in. Is that something that you could afford, Tom? I mean, because I know we talked about rentals and stuff. And it's great to have stuff come in and build, we definitely need housing, but we need like affordable housing at some point. And is this, is this what, this is what we're talking about? Okay, so my question on this, I don't know if it's a question. This looks very institutional. It doesn't look like small hometown. I mean, maybe it's going to look a lot different, new buildings really do look really nice and everything, but, I mean, this is a little town of Pickwa. There's nothing inviting or nothing that looks like is. It doesn't say small hometown at all, come visit us at all, I don't think. But I do know that we need affordable housing and 300 seemed a lot. Maybe you can ask if there's any other projects we have in coming up, building that's going to be affordable or less than that, because we need... Thank you.
Yes, answer.
Certainly. So yes, $300,000 is the price point that the developer's targeting because that's what the market is comfortable with for this product type in our community. You might, would see the same product at a much higher price point in another community, but that's not the case here. The comment about looks institutional, these are, the design is to replicate traditional townhome units that you may have seen in the community years gone by before some of them were demolished or if they didn't exist here. But this is very much what you would see in terms of a townhome product based upon modern building code interpretation and what you can and can't do. So these are, in my opinion, a very attractive product. And as I indicated before, the permitting and the review process and everything that they'll have to go through will be subject to the local development standards and they'll have to satisfy all of those requirements.
Say there was a court, was there going to be a courtyard in between?
The area in between is, it's a common area is what they would refer to it as, and it's the driveway, is the drive aisles between the two rows of buildings, and that is their entry to the garages that are tucked underneath in the rear so that you don't have front-loaded garages where people, cars are crossing sidewalks where pedestrians are trying to move, something that's highly undesirable in your downtown. So it's a very thoughtful design. As I've mentioned before, it works very well, I've seen it in person. I'm sure you all have seen them in downtown Dayton or elsewhere in your travels. This is a product that is becoming more and more popular in the marketplace and we're seeing it all over, in communities all over the place. Affordability, I would just note that the Arrowhead subdivision where Arbor is building, they're advertising homes starting in the, I believe, upper 200s or mid 200s, I think their sign says. And I'm sure that's a very basic product, but it is attainable or available. They're also offering many upgrades, so if you've been out there lately, there's over 90 lots and just about all of them have a housing, have a house on them at this point. So they're moving product very well at a price range somewhere in the 200s to, some are selling, I understand, for upwards of $500,000 once they put the basement and all the upgrades into them. So there's different product options that are available. And then there are also a number of other development interests who are inquiring about sites that may be available, who are looking to do a product both at a higher price point and some at a lower price point. So we're seeing a very nice diversification of our housing inventory through the market, through the development community responding to the market needs, right? The other thing I'd note is all of these are a market-based product. That means they're not subsidized, there's no low-income housing tax credits or any of the other subsidy tools that sometimes give folks a little anxiety. These are based upon what the market price, what the market will pay for the product that they're providing. And as I mentioned, I think there are some more coming that will be of a price point more in that 200s range.
Yeah, I believe my...
And that by today's standards is very much an affordable product. Sorry.
I believe my income was part of my financial disclosures that I filed, so I appreciate Ms. Heisler pointing out that I wouldn't be able to afford a $300,000 simple fee home. But the way to, as for many in my generation and younger housing is quite inaccessible. And the way to start addressing that is by increasing the inventory and by creating new housing. And those first few new entrants, the new buildings, they're going to be at that market rate, but the way to control the market rate in the future and to potentially bring it back down is by continuing to increase the inventory as this project does.
One challenge that we have is that we haven't seen a significant number of housing starts for multiple decades. And so the market is just now starting to catch up or gain interest in our community in part because of a lot of the things we've been doing over the past decade to plan for what's next and to position ourselves for those opportunities. And one of the issues with that lack of new housing starts is it creates a very stagnant market in that individuals who want to move up or move down have nowhere to go to. So it stifles the price points and the lack of comparables make it difficult for the lenders to launder money for folks that maybe want to pursue one of the new products or the few that are available.
I saw an interesting report on a morning financial show that said that the average age for the first buy for a generation X person was age 40. First house purchase was for age 40. And I'm thinking, that's something different than I experienced, so that's... Just a comment.
No other public comment cards?
I call for the question. I would move the approval of Resolution R-119-25.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Do you'd like a...
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Resolution Number R-121-25.
A resolution authorizing the sale of real estate.
Once again, this pertains to the lots along South Main Street that were previously occupied by derelict structures that were subsequently demolished. And as part of the previous item we were discussing, these lots would be assembled and conveyed to the developer via the development agreement to enable the improvements that were discussed. And because they're city-owned real estate, it's necessary for the city commission to authorize the sale of those properties.
Any questions from commissioners? You're good. I'll entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number R-121-25.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Do you'd like a...
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Nay.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Resolution Number R-122-25.
A resolution authorizing a transfer of cash from the Scott Drive Redevelopment Capital Projects Fund to the Non-Tax Revenue Bonds 23 Debt Service Fund.
Mayor and Commissioners, so this resolution authorizes a transfer of cash from the Scott Drive Redevelopment Fund over to the Debt Service Fund. So the Scott Drive project was finished up and we're done with that and we paid all the costs related to that project. And there was approximately $147,000 left in there. So the, what we're doing is moving that over to the Debt Service Fund that services the debt for that project so that this money can then be used to pay on that debt. This was previously authorized, the appropriations for this transfer were previously authorized by the commission. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
No.
They were using this to pay back a loan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are no public comment cards on this. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution R-122-25.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros?
Aye.
All right, next on our agenda?
A resolution to authorize the purchase of real estate.
Commissioners, this is a property located just east of the Town and Country Building at 125 West Water Street. We refer to it as 123 West Water Street. It's a former garage space. The garage is in a state of disrepair, it's got some structural issues in the roof system. We have, as you know, acquired, with, I'm sorry, the city has provided support to the Pickwa Improvement Corporation previously to acquire the Town and Country Building. And through that initiative, we have development interests ready to pursue the redevelopment of that property. It's part of the vision, as it were, from the very get-go, there's going to need to be some off-street parking that supports the improvements at that location. And so it's intended that the existing garage, which is in a state of disrepair, will be demolished. That has already been authorized and the funds are already in place for that. That is by way of a state grant through the Ohio Demolition Grant Program. And the other component then is for the city to obtain ownership of the property so that as we make the improvements around the building as part of the public support of the project to excite the interest to go forward with a multimillion-dollar investment that would revitalize a significant historic structure in the community, we need to control the property. So the owner is amenable to selling the property at a price point of $65,000, which is comparable to what was paid and what the market has indicated is the fair market value. A footnote to that is 10% of the amount that we would be expending can actually be reimbursed by way of the state demolition grant program. So in effect, it's something more along the lines of $59,000. Happy to answer any questions.
So the plan is to create additional downtown parking with this?
Correct.
Do you have a, do you have an estimate on how many additional spaces that would provide and information on ADA spaces?
The area where the subject building is located, I'm just spitballing here, probably 15 to 20 spaces. And as with any parking improvement, the appropriate number of handicap spaces would be provided, ADA-compliant spaces. I would suspect the proximity of the stalls nearest the street would probably lend themselves to meeting the requirements in terms of pathway distances and van-accessible spaces. So I don't know the final design of the project at this point because that's not where we're at in this process, but it would have the appropriate number, whether that's one or two or 10, whatever the standards would have us provide, that's what will be there.
Yeah, getting further along in the process, I assume Mr. Henkelman will be designing out those parking spots. Can you explain maybe a little bit about the process to determine what the appropriate number of handicap accessible spots would be?
Yeah, I don't want to step out of my lane, but since I have the seat, the ADA standards provide guidance, there's guidance documents that describe the specifics in terms of what is required in a general environment such as a downtown area when you're talking about public parking spaces, as compared to if it's a private lot, say a retail strip or something, the building code calls out, there's a certain number of spaces required per thousand square feet or whatever the case may be. So those guidance documents that the federal agencies have provided us tell us how many spaces there ought to be and within what distance, you know, the longest distance to be traveled to any of the public amenities or retail shops that are accessible from those parking facilities. So it's no different than any other discipline, there's design standards and we follow those. And those, as you know, have only existed for a handful of years, relatively speaking. So there are a lot of improvements that predate those standards that are being caught up.
Thank you.
So this property, you say it was sold, what I'm seeing here is from a parcel search result, and this was actually sent to me by one of my constituents. It said the last sale was 7/29/2024 and the sale price was $60,000. Is that correct?
I don't know what you're looking at there, I know the last purchase...
You mentioned that they had purchased it and the purchase price was $60,000?
It was purchased with the other parcel that it abuts, the same ownership interest bought both parcels and I think it was more...
The appraised value of that lot, of that building from this parcel search is $30,800. Why would we be paying twice that?
So the auditor's valuation doesn't necessarily reflect the market valuation?
Right.
Right? So, you know, the market valuation is set by the buyer and seller and previous sale transactions that have occurred relatively recently, the current owner and the one before them have established that number.
Any other questions from commissioners? Kim Heisler.
My question was going to be that same, that same thing, but in your response, though, you mentioned that $60,000 was, that price was with another parcel? Is that what you were saying, Chris? That $60,000?
The $65,000, or the $60,000, I'm sorry, there were two parcels that the current owner acquired at the same time. And so they bought the building facing Main Street and the garage as part of the same purchase transaction. I don't have the auditor's parcel data in front of me to see how it was split out or broken down.
Because it actually looks like it was...
But those occurred at the same time.
Can I just walk over there for clarity to get...
No, you have to address those.
Would you be able to show me the parcel if I showed you the...
You can do that afterwards if you'd like.
Okay, well, how would I find out what that second parcel is, if I was curious? I've already gone to the auditor's site, it's not very clear.
Did you go to the auditor themselves and talk to them, go down there?
Online. I have asked them specifically about this before. My other question was, why is 123 West Water not actually on this staff report anywhere? I see the N44 number is, which is clear on here, the N44 number on here, but I'm looking for the second. Yes, they, I talked to them for about 30 minutes, actually, trying to find out what the address of that building was. So how do I go about finding what that second parcel is? Can I just walk over and ask, Chris?
No, I'll ask him.
Yeah, okay, do you need this pick?
No, he's got it.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess that's it, the same question as the, you know, appraised, which are current appraisals, evaluation of 33. So, yep, that's it.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah. In my opening remark, you heard me refer to it, it's adjacent to 125 West Water, we refer to it as 123 West Water.
Who's "we"?
We, myself, that's figuratively speaking, me, myself and I, simply because there is no formal address assignment for a garage accessory structure of this type. So that's why we use the parcel ID in the packet. The, a budding parcel that it was purchased together with was, is the one right next to it on the drawing, N44001310, which is known as 124 North Main Street.
Okay. Steve Yenney.
Yeah, hold on. So it's got an interesting history on this project, I mean, on this building. It was sold by Vernon Quintner for $32,500 in 2017. So one of my questions is, has there been any improvements on the building that would raise, you know, the value of the building since 2017 when he sold it? If you look at the transaction since then, there was Foss Investments and they bought it as part of a group package and then it was sold to 124 North Main LLC, and then that entity sold it to 124 Main LLC, Wilson Reiser, who...
Yeah, hold on. So, it's got an interesting, interesting history on this project, I mean, on this building. It was sold by Vernon Quintner, Quintner for $32,500 in 2017. So, one of my questions is, has there been any improvements on the building that would raise, you know, the value of the building since 2017 when he sold it? If you look at the transaction since then, there was Foss Investments and they bought it as part of a group package. And then it was sold to 124 North Main LLC. And then that entity sold it to 124 Main LLC. Wilson Reiser, who, Wine and Candies, 124, that's, he owned it. And then it was sold, the last transaction was, I can't pronounce his last name, but his first name, Brandon V. He does a lot of redevelopment.
Sort of legal.
Yeah. And the other thing is in the staff report and just here in the narrative, I didn't hear any mention that the actual cost is going to be more than $65,000. If you read the resolution, you'll see it's actually some undisclosed costs as well. There's closing cost and then there were some kind of other loan fees mentioned in the resolution. So, you haven't heard about that either. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
So, what are the actual costs?
Incidental to every property transaction, there are prorated taxes that are due by both buyer and seller. There's closing fees by the market company, the transaction firm. There's the cost of the title search and a variety of other things that are nominal. In the grand scheme of things, you're talking a couple thousand dollars, usually for closing cost if that.
Is that included? Is that included in the budget?
Yeah, as I mentioned, the $65,000 purchase price will actually be able to be reimbursed by 10% through the State Demolition Grant Program. So, in effect, it'll be less than 65 at the end of the day.
Were there any improvements to that building whatsoever? And like you said, the, the cost is negotiated by the buyer and seller, so I understand that.
Yeah, the-
And you're going to demolish it anyways?
Improvements, I think, until, right, until just cleaning things out at one point. And then there was some bracing that was installed where the roof structure or assembly has begun to fail to stabilize the building so that it didn't collapse and become a public nuisance.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? I'll ask for a motion then.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-123-25.
Second. Moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Nay.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Homan.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros.
Aye.
That will take us to the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. First on the list, I just would like to thank the Vice Mayor for attending the Pickwah's Magical Illumination on Saturday. We lit up all the Christmas lights downtown and it was right before the horse parade. It was very well attended. We intend on getting the numbers back from the Tourist Bureau to find out exactly how many people attended via their cellphone data. And lastly, with the holiday next week, please check your refuse pickup schedule. But when I did, it said that there is no service delays from Rumpke on Thursday during Thanksgiving. But I would encourage everybody through the holiday season to go ahead and check for themselves to make sure that they get their trash out on the right day. And that's the end of my report.
Hey, um, do you know what's going on with the project, the development project up by Eagles Nest? Is anything going on with Deerfield? Yes.
I'm sorry, which project?
The housing, the new houses?
At Deerfield?
Deerfield, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, I would have to consult with Mr. Hinkleman. I can get back to you on that.
Well, the people in Deerfield would like a meeting with the developer just to find out where they're at and what's going on in the next phase and stage. And they said they were willing to do that in a commission meeting. So, I would just need to get the two parties together so that they could meet. They asked me to do that and I'm willing to do that. So, we can get Deerfield information, so, or the people who are doing the development. We can get their information, get those guys together. I would like to do that if you could help me with that.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for the City Manager from Commission? All right, Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Simmons.
Hey, good evening. It was a pretty harrowing afternoon. I was in the middle of a meeting at work and all of a sudden my house shook. And I got up and ran towards the den because it sounded or felt like someone had fallen from standing up. And my wife is an extreme fall risk. So, I went there and she's sleeping comfortably in the chair. And I went outside and there was a home just down the street, down at Covington and McKinley, that had caught fire and there was an explosion. And so, the, nobody perished in the fire. But Brian Markin is the homeowner there and he's, he was injured. And I've been talking with his daughter, so, just, those of you who are praying people, pray for him. They lost everything. And there's no, that I know of, there's no GoFundMe or fundraiser set up. But when there is, any of you who follow me on Facebook, I will definitely have it, have it out there and try and help them as they need. Dave Smith was up here earlier today and this evening and mentioned that, yeah, he's living in my home. And his presence in my house is a grace. I'm married to a woman who is in her final days of life. She is an extreme fall risk. She weighs more than I do. I have hands that work about 75% of the way they should because I've got surgical steel pins in two fingers of each hand. I can't lift her up. If she falls, I scream, "Dave!" And he comes running out, or I'll scream for his son. And they come running out and they help me get her upright. They help cook, you know? I showed him compassion because he needed a place to stay. He's shown me compassion for these several months, just helping me take care of my wife. And it's amazing. When you show someone compassion, very often they'll show you compassion back. And with that, I'll yield.
Commissioner Homan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to address one of the resolutions that we talked about tonight. The taxpayer, my constituents, people I represent, found out that we're paying an additional 19% for insurance this year, which is quite a substantial hike. And then they also, the citizens and taxpayer also found out that one of the commissioners is suing the city. And they might be left with the question as to, is that increase in 19% that the taxpayer has to pay, is that, is that because one of the commissioners is suing the city? And when I, when I asked Commissioner Simmons how much money he was seeking to get out of that lawsuit, he said he had to talk to his lawyer. And I'm just not sure what I'm supposed to tell my constituents that I represent, if they ask me any of those questions. And I guess I'm curious if, if that's the same response that Commissioner Simmons would give to the people that he represents, is that they need to talk to his lawyer, which seems to cause some issues with transparency and openness, talking to your people that you represent. So, I'm just, I don't know, I'm sitting up here a little flabbergasted since I found out about that. And just thought I would share that with the people here. Thank you.
Commissioner Vedder.
I have several things quickly. Number one, the Southview Neighborhood Association has awarded three beautification awards to houses in the Southview area. And we're in the process of acknowledging those people. And we're proposing a gift certificate to a local establishment for the continued improvements to their homes. We think that's a neat thing to be doing for our, for our community. Number two, I attended the, the tour of the Miami County Jail last Saturday. Let me be nice as well as honest. I don't care to spend a night there. And hopefully, I don't do anything that would result in that. But, but that's a facility that is sadly in need of either repair or a new facility. And I think the county is about to propose a tax, sales tax levy to fund that. So, if you're interested in that, you can contact the sheriff. I think he's open to the idea of giving other tours. But it's a, it's a, it's an eye-opening tour. I'll let it be at that. I had the opportunity to meet with city staff and representative from MVRPC in reference to what's called an age-friendly city. You may have seen some ads on TV recently from AARP that talk about what is an age-friendly city? How do we design things for people in that category? More information to come on that. I think it's a really interesting kind of a process to be talking about. Are we an age-friendly community? If so, how do we, how do we design things that affect that community? Let's see here. I want to mention again that we have money in this year's budget and money in next year's budget for our SPAN neuter program. It is a trap and release program. But we're still looking for volunteers who might be willing to be trained and then help with applying that program. I have a neighbor who does not own cats and he cleaned out 36 deposits of cat manure from his yard. I think that's a little extreme for me. I think that's, that tells me we have a problem. So, that, that's another addition there. Let's see here, let's see. My understanding is that we're in the final stages of getting the Olive Garden open. And I had hoped for a little earlier opening, but it looks like it's going to be close maybe to the end of the year. But the plans are proceeding for the new motel, which will be behind there. So, more information about that to come. And again, I've had the opportunity to, to be the emcee for the Magical Illumination last Saturday night downtown. It was a fun event, well-attended by lots of people. And I'm happy to represent the city in that activity. So, with that, I will yield.
Commissioner DeBros.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, had some amazingly awesome prepared remarks that I now no longer know or recall what they were. I am, am still grappling with, with some new information I learned tonight during the meeting. And one of which Commissioner Homan addressed, and I don't feel the need to go into that anymore regarding Commissioner Simmons being a named party in a suit against the city. But going back to, I believe it was during one of the economic development resolutions that was discussed. And one of the constituents who came up for, for public comment mentioned that he was living with Commissioner Simmons and Commissioner Simmons reaffirmed that. And, and again, let me be clear, I don't care who lives with you. My issue and the problem that I'm trying to grapple with here on the fly, so I apologize if I appear to be scattered or trying to make sense of this, it's because I am, is that the same gentleman said that he received a settlement from the city and is now living with the commissioner and from what you said, providing you a service.
Let him finish, let him finish.
So, I remember when we voted on whether or not to settle this lawsuit or not. There were a couple of us here who voted against settling that and there were some who did. So, I'm not, you're hearing me think out loud. And, and that is why I cannot remember what thrilling remarks I was going to have. However, since all of these things were said here to us publicly, I didn't share anything that was not said from that microphone. Mr. Mayor, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around everything that we learned tonight. And with that, I'll yield back.
All right.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
I didn't ask Mr. Smith to come stay at my house until the first time my wife hit the floor and I couldn't pick her up.
That it?
Yeah.
And again, I'm not questioning your motives. However, you have to understand why some of us are having a difficult time wrapping our head around this. Where anytime anyone who's out there disagrees with one way or a way that one of us vote, they immediately start questioning our ethics. And again, this is the first I've, I've learned this in this type of environment. So, again, I apologize for not being able to wrap my head around this. And you are getting this outside. And I didn't bring this into this meeting.
Right.
But I do think it needs to be publicly documented that it was brought into this meeting. And that is all.
To put it a different way, what I'm having trouble with is that your vote during that lawsuit last year was to grant a payout to a person who you now say is providing you a service that you need, which is kind of the prerequisite for getting provided a service. And I don't know how I would explain that to constituents that are going to be asking me about that. Because certainly, certainly a little odd.
On my two cents in, I found it odd when Mr. Smith said what he, he said about collusion. I don't know what he's talking about and I don't care to entertain any, any thoughts. Yeah, I knew that Mr. Smith was living with, because I asked you and you were okay?
And I was perfectly honest with you.
You were? And I hadn't, I had no problem with it. But it does make the question, when he comes up, or any of people come up and say that I'm on the take or we're on the take and, and questions our, our ethics. And it just, it's mind-boggling that he would come, and he did it again tonight. It just, it's frustrating.
I'll kick him out and make her lay on the floor.
I don't want that. I didn't want that.
Make her lay on the floor.
I never said anything. I've never said anything.
Permission to be excused, sir.
You're going to stick around for public comment?
Would you guys be okay if I left right now?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll stick around because you said so.
Thank you.
I, I think it's very interesting that when questioned about what certainly seems to me to be a quid of voting to pay out the settlement to Mr. Smith, followed by the pro quo of receiving a service that you need from him, your reaction is to go immediately to an emotional argument and try to say that we are going against your wife, who we are all so very deeply sorry for.
Yeah, I hear from you all the time.
Deepest sympathies for that. But instead of actually addressing that appearance of impropriety, you are deflecting with an emotional argument.
All right, I'm going to finish my comments. I want to congratulate Mr. Walker on taking my seat. Heavy as a seat. Have fun with it. I truly enjoyed my time up here. I really did. There's a lot of good that can be done from this seat and you can do that. I know, I know the type of person you are. I bought shirts at your place. You guys have a great store and you're the type of guy that I think you'll do a great job. I really do. So, congratulations. And keep coming to meetings, start getting involved. We need you, so. Also, if anybody's interested, from the fourth ward, is interested in that seat, it went unfilled. So, we need people, if you want to write in, send your resume. We're soliciting for those at this point in time so that the next commission, starting in January, has a foothold or at least they've got, we've got a couple in already, but at least we'll get a start on trying to find a commissioner for the fourth ward.
Mr. Mayor, we have, is that page open already?
Well, no, I'm just telling people to start sending stuff in. We've got two people, two people sent, one called me and I forget, one called-
But they have to apply on the online page, right?
Well, no, they just, they sent a resume in, so.
Okay.
Mayor, we'll be receiving applications on the website and also for the open board seats for Planning Commission, or BZA.
So, there will be a website for it as well, but if people want to send their resume in, please do it. We would like that. And with that, I have nothing else further and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned and we'll go straight to non-agenda public comment and start with Mr. Wessel.